All right, it is six o'clock, so Juliana is not here today. So Vice Mayor Alu were running the meeting tonight and bringing it to order. So let's go to the flag salute.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we are roll call next, and then you can go over the change to the meeting format.
Roll call, please. Dave Kessler. Bruce Deutsch. Matthew Bryan. And Michael Clarno.
Here.
Mayor Juliana Lucchese is not present.
She has excuse absence for the record.
And I would, Vice Mayor Clarno, I would like to request that we move items five, six, and 10 to after item 11, as Rico Tinsman has another meeting at 6:30. I want to ensure that we have time for him to present item 11A.
No objection.
No objection.
All right, we'll move item 11, do we need to do a vote on that, or can we just move it?
We can just move it.
We'll move item up to in between items four and five. With that, we don't have any special presentations or announcements, so we'll move on to public comment. And then format for a public comment is each member of the public gets three minutes to speak. We will start with the individuals in the room and then move on to Zoom if anyone has any public comments there. And please state your name and optionally your address for the record.
Karen O'Quinn, 5714 Dunsmere Avenue. I'm here tonight to ask the city government to please make the Dunsmere Library's roof replacement a priority. The building is a historic building in the Dunsmere Historic District. It is owned by the city and has been poorly maintained by the city for many years. As many of you are already aware, last Friday, March 31st, a wet soggy ceiling tile above the south wall fell on the bookshelves and floor in the children's section, damaging books. Additionally, there were six other soggy tiles that looked ready to fall. I'm very grateful this event did not occur when children were present. We had to close the library to the public until it could be cleared up, cleaned up. I've managed the library for 15 years, and the roof has leaked every single year. Additionally, every year, something else that needs repairs in the building occurs, like leaking pipes in the furnace room and a deteriorating threshold by our back door. Those are current. It is my belief that it is the City of Dunsmere's responsibility to replace the roof and make repairs to this historic building a priority. And by the way, new ceiling tiles have not been replaced yet, even though there is an unopened box of ceiling tiles in our furnace room. I'd also like to read a letter from our library, our county librarian, Michael Perry. To whom it may concern, I write to support the City of Dunsmere's efforts to replace and repair the roof for the Dunsmere branch and prevent further water damage to the library, its resources, and furnishings. Fortunately, the recent leak that was discovered on Friday, March 31st, damaged only a few children's books, 14, which they will replace. However, had the leak been more widespread or not detected sooner, more than 1,000 children's books could have been ruined. Overall, the Dunsmere branch contains 9,200 catalog books, DVDs, and audiobooks, where about half of the copies are the only copy in our library's system. The county assesses a valuation of approximately $375,000 for all the catalog material, which does include, does not include, the extensive Friends of the Library book sale items or the branches substantial on your honor collection. And there's more, but I'll read it.
Thank you very much. All right, if you would state your name.
I'm Kevin Tiski. I live at 5945 Dunsmere Avenue. I'm here, I also serve on the board of the Friends of the Dunsmere Library with Karen and Tim. And I'm here about, same thing about the library roof. I just wanted to add a few things to what Karen did. She covered most everything, but we got real lucky on the roof thing because there was, you know, none of the other libraries in the county were open on that day. It was Caesar Chavez Day, everything was closed, and they almost didn't open. They decided to open Karen and our volunteer West. And it was a good thing they did because that's how they discovered the damage. They called me, I work at Dunsmere Hardware, most of you guys know me from there. And it's called me up, and I took, you know, the bosses there, they're great, new folks are great. They gave me a half an hour off to just run up there and see what we needed. And I took a couple rolls of plastic up there, and we covered up the stuff. And like they said, it was only 14 books, but if we hadn't pulled all the rest of those books off and put plastic over everything, it took five rolls of plastic, 20 feet long plastic. I only had so much time. I plastic up what I could. I called my son, Modoc, he's a great kid, you guys probably get to know him. And he ran down and finished up, and he helped out Karen and Wes cover up all the books. So it was, you know, somewhat happy ending, you know, but it was real close, guys. And like she said, it's been, it's been every year. I've been on the board now for almost two years now, right? And we talk about it every rainy month, we talk about the, we talk about the roof. And so we're just, you know, I don't want to give anybody a hard time. I know there's a lot of stuff that you guys, you know, got going on. There's a lot of problems that you guys are all working on. So not to cast any dispersions on anybody, but, you know, we can, we can make this a priority. That'd be great, because, you know, another thing Karen didn't get the time to bring up was that the children's section's still closed. We weren't sure if we were going to be able to reopen the library, but she did open it on Tuesday, you know, and she and Wes did a really good job cleaning it up. It doesn't look like a disaster area, you know, but there's still plastic over every shelf on the south wall. The children's section's cordoned off with caution tape. And it, you know, I brought my three-year-old in there, and he kept wanting to climb under there and go play on the rug and stuff, and, you know, we can't really, you know, and I know it'll be a quick thing to get the ceiling tiles in. I don't even think, you know, Brian was aware that those tiles were in the furnace room. Okay, so I just want to say, we can get a quick fix on it now, get the tiles up, get the children's section open, but we should really take advantage of the dry months coming up to get this roof fixed. If we can, you know, make it a priority, we'd all really appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you. Thanks for.
Jim Holt, also on the library board. So this has been an ongoing problem, as people have pointed out year after year, and we really need to get beyond having a blue tarp spread over just one corner of the library. So I strongly urge this council, put this item on your next agenda, please. And meanwhile, direct staff to take immediate steps to hire a contractor to replace the roof and take whatever other steps are necessary to permanently fix this very serious problem. Thank you very much.
Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council, members of the public, I came tonight hoping to speak to the mayor because.
One second, Peter, if you wouldn't mind stating your name for the record.
I'm still Peter Art Jr. I still live in the Historic District of 5859 Sacramento Avenue. And I wanted to applaud the mayor for having the intellect and the energy to raise in 2020 the idea of vision and planning. In 2020, Juliana Lucchese did a much better job than Peter Art did in 2010 in saying the City of Dunsmere needs a community vision and priorities. The notion of these agendas with nothing on the agenda has to stop. Whether it's the leaky library or the really beautifully done 2020 proposal to reach out to the community, you're governing a community, and you don't really care what the community thinks. You don't talk to the community. What are your top five priorities? Please select only five. Parks and city pool, green waste program, sidewalk maintenance and construction, historic district maintenance, business development, airport improvements, disaster preparedness, community resource center, city library, city events. And you're doing none of those. You're just doing the maintenance, passive, timid. You're not helping the community and those of us that are trying to make this city better. So besides putting the library on the next agenda, I would like to see City of Dunsmere 2020 Community Vision and Priorities put on the next agenda. I would like to see the quarterly budget review. For whoever's chairing finance, it's supposed to be automatic that we have a quarterly, transparent, informative budget review. But all we see is future agenda items, nothing. You and the mayor have a secret list, I guess, but the idea is what we have to say doesn't really matter. You're serving your interests and not ours, and that has to change. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Alan Clother. I live at Portico 9 Oak Street, new to Dunsmere. Talked to Bruce a lot, that big day of gradually meeting people around the community. 18 months into Dunsmere, and I've tried to connect with people to share how difficult it's been for me as a new person to find out what the city's vision is. And after 18 months, I finally stumbled across the 2020 budget that has action items in it and a vision statement, and I finally heard about the RFP for downtown revitalization. And I was like, it seems like that's in the welcome pack. It's like, welcome to Dunsmere, we're so glad you're here. You know, we're taking a 15-year-old abandoned house and restoring it. So we're investing in the community and wanting to bring life. Our daughter-in-law has started the Cedar Grove Heritage Center as a part of bringing new life to Dunsmere, and I'm excited about the place. Now, curiously, Saturday, I was invited to a meeting with two other gentlemen who are new here. We said, we're all struggling to find out what the vision is and how to get involved. We don't want to see Dunsmere die. We just moved here. We don't want to move here and watch the city die. I don't believe it's going to die. What I do believe is we need to hear from city leadership regularly about where we're headed. Right, Tim? I don't know about you either, but I hear the passion in your voices to see things happening, to know that things are happening, and to know who's doing it. A lot of times I find out, well, somebody is doing it, but nobody else knows. Am I right? And so, so you can hear a little frustration in my voice, because I love this town, always have since I first found it, here, my daughter-in-law who grew up here. She did her master's degree on what Dunsmere needs to do to become healthy, of all things. You know, and so we're just right smack in the middle of it. And so my encouragement and my suggestion to Bruce was, we would take advantage of things like the volunteer fair to also put a Q and A session with that, where the community can come together and say, hey, what is the vision? Tell us about the RFP for the downtown revitalization, or, you know, where are we headed? Bruce has been great enough to meet with me and sit and have coffee, thank you. And kind of do the same with Juliana, or anybody, so I can have their audience to try to take the vision you've got and communicate it to new people. I was surprised that I was the expert in the room on this Saturday meeting after 18 months telling them what I've already learned and helping them go from negative to positive. Because in the absence of information, people create their own storyline. And a lot of times the storyline isn't good. They just go, the place is going to die, better get out. And so that's what I don't want to see happen. How did I do?
You've got, the last second thing doesn't work, but you've got four seconds.
Four seconds. Thank you, guys, for all you do.
All right, any other public comment?
Any hands raised?
All right, if you're on Zoom and you want to do public comment, jump down to the reaction tab and raise your hand. Seeing no one, I will close public comment, and we will move on to item number 11, new business.
Good evening, everyone.
First item is General Plan Annual Progress Report Update and contract with the city planner, Rico Tinsman. And it's over to you, Bill.
All right, I will pass it on to Rico, because I know you have a meeting, so go ahead, Rico.
Thank you. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Fantastic, okay. So I apologize that I am kind of in a hurry, I'm double booked this evening. So this is the, so for, for three of you, this is familiar territory. This is the General Plan Annual Progress Report that you've seen every year. And for Councilmember Clarno, this is something that we are required to do by state law. So as you know, under state law, we're required to have a general plan. And within the general plan addresses specific topics of community importance, which are defined in chapters that are called elements. So what you've got here in your report is really just sort of a summary of the current status of the general plan, as far as where it is legally. And you've got some areas where it talks about things that we need to do to address changes in state law. The long and the short of it is, you know, we were just hearing about desire for community vision, right? Your general plan is your vision for the community. So really, the stuff that's being discussed here, we're really super helpful because over the next year, we're going to be working on updating the general plan. And I'll tell you, that's a minor update, all right? A general plan update is a multi-year project, and it's a very, very expensive project. This is a grant-funded project to get us legally compliant with state law. And to be honest, we've got a good general plan. It was written, you know, over between 2004 and 2006, adopted in 2006, and it's pretty good. There are things that I've noticed over the last 17 years that need, you know, we could fix and make better. But as it is right now, we do have, you know, we're working on a, you know, a minor amendment of the general plan right now that's out for public review that changes sort of a, you know, mixed use in the central, basically the current seat two. But, so we do occasionally do things that are changing, but this is a, this is a annual report. So really, its focus is what occurred over the past year. And fundamentally, the report consists of two parts. There's a part that you see before you, which is this 28-page doc, 23-page document. And then there's a series of worksheets that the state requires, the Office of Planning and Research and the Department of Housing and Community Development, that are largely focused on housing production, whether the housing production that we're experiencing has been subject to certain state provisions. And, you know, so we had no housing production in 2022. So the report, those worksheets would be a lot of blank forms for you, so I spared you those. But those are what we submit to the state after the fact. So this is something we'll see every year, we'll do every year. But fundamentally, what it's, you know, too often, people look at their general plan. They do it, they write it, and they forget about it. They get back to the business. Makes sense. This is, because we're all busy, right? It's hard to keep track of all this stuff all the time. But this is a great opportunity, every year at this time, to look back at all those policies and programs. I put them in this report for you so that you can see them, and you can reflect on them. You can think, hey, is, can we do that better? You know, can we, can we do a better job of, that's a good policy, that's a good program? Or you go, hey, that's nuts, right? That's not the direction of the city anymore. So that's what this opportunity is, is sort of a, it's a check in as far as where are we at with the general plan? What needs to be done to bring it current with state law? And sort of, you know, here are some things that we've done over the last year that, further implementation of the general plan. And then again, it's a bunch of reporting on housing production, which again, last year, there was zero. So the big news here fundamentally is that you're working on, the city's working on a housing element update that will be completed, that is scheduled to be completed and hopefully certified, fingers crossed, by the State of California prior to October 31st of this year. And that by the end of next year, we'll have the other components of the general plan updated consistent with state law. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yes, go ahead, Bruce.
Yeah, thank you. Rico, one question I have, is this an opportunity to change, to look at the zoning at the airport for possible multiple use?
So we will be looking, we can certainly look at that. Yes, so, so there's one, there's, so we have funding through this LEAP grant. It's limited funding to update the general plan. So yes, we can do certain things depending upon what we're doing. You know, one of the things we've just done with this, you know, doing a comprehensive zoning code update under the SB2 grant is make sure that we don't do anything that makes it more intense, you know, because we don't, a secret document alone could eat up the entire grant, right? Nothing but a secret document, and you don't have a project. So what we've really been trying to do here is make sure that what we're doing is environmentally benign, land use compatibility is assured. So when we talk about these things, yes, it's an opportunity for us to change our general plan. We can change any, any element of the general plan up to four times per year. This one will be grant-funded, as long as we stay within the general confines of the grant and we don't go crazy and do something that's really spending most of our grant rather than complying with state law, changing a lot of stuff in the airport. Yeah, we can, we can, it's a good opportunity. And the other thing we can do is even if there's some city cost for us to do something that's separate, city interest that's outside the grant, there's cost savings by pairing it with this. We just need to make sure that we account for it, we don't charge the grant for it.
Thank you, Rico. I just hope we keep that in mind moving forward so we have a chance to look at that.
Absolutely, and so one thing I would suggest is take a look at the Comprehensive Zoning Code Update that's over at City Hall, the draft. Take a look, there are changes at the airport that will hopefully better protect airport operations and change the land use, the zoning outside of the airport, consistent with the land use, which is mixed-use plan development, to allow for a lot of different things. So I think we're actually probably likely already addressing what you're concerned with.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Matthew.
Good evening, Rico. Thank you for helping us with this tonight. I just had some questions that may overlap with some of the housing element aspects, but as regards to the single-family dwelling zoning, I know there's major adjustments at the state level that I've heard are happening. Is that something that's going to be integrated in the housing element? Where, say, it's going to be easier potentially to zone duplex, triplex, and single-family zoning?
No, not, not yet. So largely, what we're seeing at the state so far has been, so you have to be an urbanized area or urban cluster, urbanized area, you're talking about 50,000 people. Urban cluster, much smaller, those, we actually, we only have two urban clusters in Siskiyou County, and I would argue one was inappropriately made by the Census Bureau. One being, so why, Rico, you know, population 8,500, they're an urban cluster. I forget the total population, I think it's, I think you have to have at least 5,000 people that qualify as an urban cluster for some of these projects that you're talking about. Those, the other one is actually a combination of the City of Weed and the City of Mount Shasta. They strung them together to create one, which you can do, but it's, I don't know if they actually did it appropriately. So, so some of that stuff, we'll definitely see a lot of updates in state housing law coming out in the housing element update. But I will tell you, I have tried to capture every single one of them, I believe I have, in the draft zoning code update that's over at City Hall.
Okay.
Everything that's, everything that's applicable to the city at this point.
Okay. Then a question beyond that, I'm a big fan of, we have so few vacant lots in Dunsmere, but we do have a number of them in certain areas, and we may have more decades or years down the road if annexation occurs. Is it possible to capture something, say, up to a four-unit in single-family zoning areas to allow for much-needed housing? Is it okay for us to go above and beyond what the state's requiring? And is it, you know, is it something we could potentially revisit as part of this process?
Oh, so, so we can always increase density and intensity in the city. However, it is a, you know, you need to do a thorough environmental review for that, and that would be an entirely different grant. Because we do not have any grants that would be able to touch that.
It wouldn't be a simple matter because of the, say, that, you know, they're on water and sewer anyway.
No, you need to look at traffic, you need to look at air quality, you need to look at noise, you need to look at climate change impacts, you need to look at fire impacts, you need to look at culture, impact tribal cultural resources. You need, do you want me to keep going?
Well, it explains why we have such little new housing.
Yeah, you are, you are correct.
Lack of plan, but we do have, I'd say, more lots than most people would realize. And if we were able to allow those usage, I'd be in favor of setting ourselves up for the future by having that in there if possible. And then I, this is maybe a little bit, not to be included here, but how difficult would it be and where would the correct process be to maybe revisit or implement some aesthetic form requirements for construction in Dunsmere?
So, so you're talking about design review standards.
Yes.
So there's two things. One, there's design, you know, there's, there is design within the Historic District. And one of the things that we're, we'll be looking at after the zoning code update is design guidelines for signs to make it easier for businesses to have their signs approved. But as far as design for housing or for commercial uses, those are separate things. So we currently, in the draft zoning code update, have objective design review standards proposed. And those are specifically for streamlined housing projects, streamlined affordable housing projects, to make sure that they are aesthetically pleasing. They're very easy to implement, and they're aesthetically pleasing. So the, but then as far as just a larger, you know, objective design review standards, that's something we would want to probably do over a, you know, probably a 12- to 18-month process involving businesses and the public.
Okay, so it wouldn't be, the housing side of it, would that be included in the housing element we're working on?
So the, the housing, as far as the design review standards for streamlined affordable housing, that is in the draft zoning code update at present.
What about just single-family homes, private, you know, market rate?
Uh, no.
Okay, so as an example question, just because I've been thinking a little bit more about this as we've been coming to build the Public Works Building, where ourselves taking responsibility for the way it's going to look and interact. So like, say, a company like Dollar General decides they want to put a location in Dunsmere, they buy up an old place, level it. Were there, are there, were there at the time perhaps, and I know you weren't the planner at that juncture, but. And I know you weren't the planner at that juncture, but design guidelines that told them they had to build like that? Or were they free to build exactly how they wanted to without any of our design review? You know, I've been to other cities where it looks like they did force some of these corporations to, to blend in with the natural aesthetic or architectural aesthetic.
Yeah, no, the city of Dunsmere does not have a, a design guidelines or design or objective design review requirements. And honestly, this is probably something for us to talk about at a later time. I do need to get to my meeting, other meeting, I apologize. But when you do objective design review, Matthew, one of the big things that happens is you, everything's subject to CQ. It's, it's, it's not necessarily a good thing. But, but we should, we should get together and have coffee and figure out ways to do this.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Rico, appreciate the information.
There is resolution. And we need to do public comment on it?
Yes.
Yep. So I'll open this up to public comment, same rules, three minutes.
Okay, well, I, I guess I have a question here.
Once again, Tim, especially since we're on Zoom, if you wouldn't mind stating your name again.
Oh, sure. Tim Holt, Dunsmere. Question, we're on item 11, obviously. And I want to point out to the council that you have, most of the people in the audience here, you know, are concerned about the library, as you all know. And we are especially interested in item five, which, and we're hoping for a positive report from staff on what they intend to do about the library. I guess my question is, you know, you have an audience here that would like to hear this. When are we going to get to number five?
After we get.
Is it after this one right here?
With all due respect, that's not part of this topic, Mr. Holt.
Yeah, I know. I missed, I just, I wasn't listening.
We'll get to, it'll be next after item 11, which is this and then the other, the sewer report, and then we'll get to.
It's going to be after the sewer rate study?
Correct.
Item? Yes. That should be a fairly quick item as well. Any other public comment on the general plan? All right, state your name and.
Still Peter Arth, still the same address. And still wishing I was talking to Mayor Lou Casey because she's an expert in urban planning. And the community is blessed to have her and her leadership. But when I was on the council, what she told us all is Siskiyou County doesn't really matter. And Dunsmere doesn't really matter. We're poor, we're rural, and the state doesn't expect us to produce much housing. And that's all true. And I love Rico Tidsman, and Rico says, "The housing plan is a vision." And I amend that to say, "The housing plan could be a vision." But you are all death to the housing crisis that exists in our community. I was the only one that went to the Planning Commission hearing Rico was there to hear an expert consultant talk about the demographics of Dunsmere and the fact that people that work those jobs in Dunsmere can't afford to live here. The notion of developing vacant lots is sort of off the table. What's on the table is the over 300 units of residential housing in the city of Dunsmere that sit unused. And what is the city going to do about it? Is it going to pursue a vision that takes all these empty unused residential housing and make it affordable for low-income and very low-income workers and residents or not? Or are you just going to mail in the same general plan housing element that you've done every year since I moved here 15 years ago? It's totally up to you. Thank you.
So if I may, and I apologize, I need to, I do need to run. Mr. Arth, if, if I may, I'm going to address the council, but I would like you to hear this. The, since you have been in the community, we have, we've done the housing element two, I believe we've done, you, you showed up in 2010, is that correct? Yeah. Okay, so we, we did one in, I think, 2009, 2010, and then we did another one in 2014. One in 2014 was a very minor update. And the reason it was such a minor update, and first of all, I, I wasn't here. I was actually working for the county at the time. But when the update, the, I guess the 2015, 2016 update was done, those updates were, were coming out of the Great Recession. The state did not want, you know, they, they didn't require housing production, anything. It was sort of a, hey, we recognize that, that this is a statutory requirement. Just here's all the data, just get the thing done, hand it in. So that one was really sort of like a free pass for the entire state of California. This next one, there's been a lot of changes in state housing law. And you're going to see a lot more pro-housing policies, you know. And I, and I don't believe that this council is, you know, your count, you know, your former council members. But I don't believe the city is deaf to the need for housing or things that, things that aren't going to be providing housing in the future. I, I think that we have opportunities coming is I guess all, what I'll say. The, but just stay tuned, stay involved in the housing element. This is, what we're talking about tonight is the general plan annual progress report, not the housing element, but do stay involved in the housing element. Take a look when the draft comes out, should be out shortly. Just stay involved, make sure that, advocate for your position. Sorry, that was to the council.
Okay, any other public comment? Seeing none, I will close public comment on this item and move to, or not move to, and put out to the council Resolution 2023-05, which is accepting the 2022 general plan annual progress report and approving the transmittal of the 22 report to the Governor's Office of Planning and Research.
I move that we accept Resolution 2023-05.
Not to get in the way of the motion, but while Rico's still here, I have a quick clarifying question, I think that would help all of us. In counting new housing units, how would we capture and are we set up to successfully capture rehabilitated units? Say that, you know, say it's 300, but say it could be anywhere from 100 to 300 units. If those come back online, do we have a way to capture that increase?
Yeah, for increase, absolutely do capture increase. We just don't capture replacement.
Okay, thank you.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you all, good evening.
Thank you, Rico. All right, so we will move on to the sewer master plan and Proposition 218 ad hoc committee. Just to give a little background to the people in the audience, the new report is due every five years. The, our master plan isn't the report, but our current master plan is from 2007. And many aspects of our current plan fall short in terms of not covering fees and costs. Justin, I'm going to, it's off to you to.
All right. I was going to say mayor and council, vice mayor and council. Thank you. So the, the idea behind the sewer master plan and the Proposition 218 ad hoc committee, so currently our 218 for the sewer goes out through 25, year 25, 26. And so right now, we just completed our reported waste discharge. And so what we're trying to do is align all of our stuff. And so once we complete a report of waste discharge, then we get a new permit. That, that permit authorizes us the ability to, to discharge into the, into the, our water after it's, you know, been cleaned through the treatment plant. And that, that permit expires every five years. So our permit expires at the end of this year. And typically with that permit, the state will provide us with a list of required improvements. And those required improvements, we don't always know what they are, but they are typically directed and that's based on changes in federal and state law during that period of time. And then they, as a part of that, then, then they require us to take action and move forward with that. And so what I'm trying to do is, is realign kind of our process and how we do this. And so once we complete this, we just completed the route, we submitted all of our information to the state. And now we've, now we're in the period of waiting until they give us our new permit at the end of the year. So the expectation is we're going to have new requirements for, for improvements, whatever those are, construction and such related. And what I'd like to do, since our master plan will, is pretty much out of date. It's, a lot of the stuff's been done and we've had some shifts in kind of priorities. I feel like it's a good time to kind of realign that in coordination with the new permit. And so then 20 years down the road, when our permit expires, then we would do another sewer master plan in coordination with that effort as well. And so kind of the idea, I brought it to the, to Mayor Lou Casey and was that we would start with having some engagement on the sewer master plan component. I expect that to take, probably not going to start until closer to, you know, the new fiscal year, but that may take up to a year to a year and a half to work through that with public engagement process and, and some other thing, you know, testing and all of those kind of things, seeing what we need to do. Because we have some pending projects that we're waiting on funding. And so those are part of the old plan, and that's pretty much the end of what that is. And so what I'd like to do is kind of move that timeline up so we're prepared and doing all the planning work, moving up to a 218 process that we would go through probably in fiscal year 24, 25 to be adopted for the end of the current or into the current five-year schedule.
Let me make one clarification here, just to clarify what we're doing today. And please correct me if I'm wrong on this. What we're doing today is establishing the motion to have them start working on the plan. And for the ad hoc committee, we're not assigning any members or anything like that. Only saying that the ad hoc committee will be created. And then once Mayor Lou Casey is back, she will be assigning members and we can discuss that later.
Right.
So this is really just the basic top-level first step. And then now.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, I guess one of my best.
Bruce had his end at first.
I thought you did. Go ahead.
Do we have an idea of the projected costs for this? Or would we have to go RFP? Or would you do it internally?
So the sewer master plan, it's budgeted at 75, but I think that's probably a little slim, probably about 100,000. And so I'm trying to cover that over probably two fiscal years. Now, we wouldn't start that till the 23, 24 fiscal year and then carry into the following year, 24, 25.
Yeah, because we're fairly low on reserves in the sewer fund, but it's scheduled to slowly rise.
Correct.
In coming years.
Yeah, and so my intention is to spread that. So we may not, it's, so for me, what I need is, I just want to start the engagement process with, with the committee, kind of understand from a staff standpoint before we, you know, do we go out to RFP or do we utilize PACE? And, and then kind of go through that process over the next few months.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then we, then we engage in the RFP process and, and continue on.
Yeah, it's, it's very sad that, you know, for four years plus on council, this would be the third time we'd have to revisit the, at least rate structure of the sewer fund. It seems like we're constantly undercutting what it costs to run a functional sewage system in our town based on the number of users we have and the state requirements. I know it's been discussed briefly in prior times, this council, but I'd love if, as part of this master plan, we could really look at all modes of processing sewage, new technologies, maybe, you know, before we invest deeper into this style of sewage plant, I think it'd be very, we'd be very well served by bringing in maybe outside experts that aren't PACE to look at the, the global picture for not just the next 20-year plan, but, you know, next several hundred-year plan, what's the right route to go with this sewage? We haven't had the space to talk big picture, we just got to fix what we have and keep it flowing. But maybe this would be a time, especially if we're going to have to spend that money, to at least get maybe a consultant from a leading university to maybe take a look at what we have here.
Yeah, and, and that is, that is part of my concern also. I mean, there's some aspects of the plant that have not been replaced since it was built in 1948 or 1978, excuse me, 78. And, and so that is, those are some of the concerns I have and want to, want to be able to address. And I feel just based on the conversations with the state so far that we're going to be expected to do some improvements, to what level, I don't know. But when we go into violation, every time we have a violation, it's a $3,000 penalty. And that's per day.
That's a day.
Per day. So if we ever, if we did have some major issues, it, it could potentially get really expensive really fast. And so one of my concerns is, and the reason I want to bring it forward is because of our, our low funding, you know, I mean, we don't have a lot of money in the, in the, in the account. And I, I want to start addressing the stuff that we can do administratively on, okay, how do we plan this better? How do we look at it better? And what does that look like for a long term? And trying to figure out, you know, can we, can we do this over two years? What does that look like? And I wanted to have some engagement as part of that process because I know that the 218 is always a sensitive subject. But I, when I, my, I'm seeing, I don't know, 10% increases two years in a row on, on costs in some line items. I'm over, I'm over budget on items related to chemicals, access to chemicals and all of that type of stuff. So part of my discussion has been exactly what you're saying is how do we do it? You know, is, are we just repairing to repair? Are we actually looking to, to the future? And does, you know, what does that look like? What is the hot, best, like, let's jump to the newest and best technologies? And what does that look like? And how do we get from A to B? And, you know, so we have a plant. And one of my, one of my things I'd like to do this spring is actually get the council out for an informational down at the plant so we can kind of discuss, you know, all the components, what's going on and how it operates. And I think that's very important. And that'll kind of, kind of add to this, but it's, I, from a 218 process, the, you know, we already are planned five years out from the 218. So the earliest I can see it, if we decided to go, it would be maybe one year early rather than wait the full five years until that, that previous process was completed. You know, and I, I mean, I was struggling to even buy a new trucks. I mean, I, I should be buying a new truck citywide every year. And so we're, equipment-wise, from, from the, that standpoint, we also have some challenges. And, and a number of, some of that stuff has been left behind and forgotten. And, and so I definitely, I completely understand and I just want to be able to make sure we can communicate it.
It occurs to me, it's just more of a comment, that it could be, when we talk about our vision for Dunsmere and housing, that we really need to reach a maybe modest number higher than we are now to sustain the system. We have, I'd be very interested in seeing the academic research behind it. Thank you.
Have we put it to public?
About any other, I mean, all right, I'm going to put this out for public comment for any member of the public. Or Bruce, sorry, Bruce.
You first, Peter.
One second, sorry, Peter, Bruce had a question first and then we'll get to.
So I just want to clarify very clearly, as, as far as the rates we're charging right now, those will, those will hold us for as long as we need to? Or are we at the point where we may have to move up our Prop 218 in order to meet our needs?
Well, and that's, that's what I want to, that's what I want to look at. So currently, we're on a schedule of price increases incrementally, one year at a time over the next through 25, year 25, 26. And those are, those were adopted November 1st and go in effect November 1st every year, along with water. That's kind of when that process happened. And so I expect this process to take two to three years. But I want to look at the, you know, we may move it up, we may decide not to. I don't know that, I can't give you that information today. That's kind of what the, what the committees to, to help figure that out and understand.
Yeah, I think over the, coming up on eight years, I've served on four different 218 committees. So I just want to reiterate right from the start that the key to the whole process is making sure the message to the public is as clear and straightforward as possible.
Yeah.
So I just throw that out there, but other than that, I look forward to whatever the committee works.
Okay.
All right, I'll open it up to public comment. Peter, please state your name and we'll.
Still Peter Arth, still the same address. And I will close on this item as I opened on my first comments. It's about vision and it's about planning. And the whole narrative tonight, nobody has found the need to mention the little screw-up that happened before Mr. Reeve became our city manager. That is between the city staff. That is between the city staff and PACE engineering. We had 200 phantom accounts on the sewer side. So that the sewer rates that we adopted did not work. We were way underfunded from the beginning. And we don't like to talk about that, but the citizens need to know that as they understand what lays ahead. I fully support what Councilmember Ryan said with the notion, there are two cities that I'm aware of that discharge their sewage into the headwaters of the upper sack, not Shasta and the city of Dunsmere. And from the time I moved up here, I could tell you it's a fool's game. The state and federal government will continue to note what is being discharged into the headwaters, pharmaceuticals, chemicals and so on. And this city of 2000 will never be able to pay to continue to discharge into the river. There are technologies all over the world that address this as potable water becomes more and more precious. So I would say, let's have a vision and planning that has a scenario where we adopt to a different method of our non-industrial, mostly harmless waste. It doesn't go in the river anymore. We work with Pacific Power and Light as other cities have done to use renewable energy for the energy requirements of our sewage system and get state, federal and utility money to help that happen and drive down the costs of our sewer operation. But most importantly, get a consultant. Why are we in this little bubble that we're still in the 1800s? I don't get it. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Bill Allen Bloder from Oak Street. We moved from Oxnard and Oxnard had the same problem, 200,000 people. And so I just bring to you the missteps that happened there that I want to see us avoid here. And missteps there, they weren't reserving up money for maintenance. And sent that money to somewhere else, maybe 15 years prior, a different city council. You know, so everybody's looking at each other, where's the money to repair our sewer system? Our sewage processing plant? Where's the money to repair the libraries? Where, where are our reserves at? And what happened is they got together in a closed room and realized they needed to increase sewer rates 58%. Voted it in, sent it out to this population and everybody just went crazy. The city council lost confidence. The whole city's in crazy, crazy making, who, who's running the city right now? Whereas they weren't to blame for the fact that the money wasn't reserved. But what they needed to do is go, hey, here's the problem. We got voted into office, there was no money in the pot. I, I wasn't here then, but we got no money in the pot. So what can we do together as a community to fill the pot back up? Because it's our library, right? It's our sewage plant. It's not your problem, it's our problem, right? So don't hear me up there going, where is? I don't know, 1948, is that what it is?
78.
So I don't know who was in charge in 48 and who put the depreciation on the balance sheet to say we didn't reserve this much money to repair. So my caution just is again, comes back to the same story vision. The more knowledge, the more information the rest of us have to know the struggles, we can carry some of that burden. Right? You don't have to carry the whole burden if we don't have enough reserves. We can all go, hey, how do we build our reserves? You know, do we all need to pitch in? How do we cover low-income peoples? People with some more money, maybe they could pitch in. I don't have the answer, just keep the information out there so we know what's going on. So we don't end up with another Oxnard.
Thank you.
Any further comment, public comment from anyone in the room? Anyone on Zoom, if you do want to make public comment, please go to the reaction bar and raise your hand. Seeing none, I will close public comment and. Does anyone want to make a motion?
I will. I make a motion. Establish the sewer master plan, the 218 process, ad hoc.
I'll second.
Call the vote.
No, I have a question real quick. It says that staff and mayor will appoint members.
That's a typo. It should be the mayor will appoint two council members and.
In the typical process.
Correct.
We have, okay. And then is it too late or can we maybe reconsider if we bring back the possibility of maybe qualified citizen numbers?
We could, we could potentially bring, I mean, if you want to table it and bring it back in the next meeting, I, I just, that was not part of the conversation that I have with Juliana.
That's been a tradition.
How about when we appoint, maybe we could make an amendment at that point, I'd like to.
Okay, I mean, I'm. I'm sure she would be amenable to that, but obviously she's not here to, to comment on that, so.
I think we can vote an amendment.
Call the vote.
Right, call vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, none, motion passes unanimously. All right, that wraps us up for item number 11. And we will now move on to number five, staff and council comments. Sheriff Forte, would you like to lead us off here?
Excuse me, the sheriff's office has nothing to report.
Okay, all right. And then we'll move on to.
Everything's good.
It's fantastic.
All right, so I actually have a long list today. It's been a busy, I would say a busy 45 days. So thank you to those who have commented and thank you to the community that has, you know, and the members of the community have come in and thanked and for the appreciation for the public works guys. And so they have spent 1,018 hours moving snow since February 24th. And that was through Sunday. And so it has been a long, long road, but we are finally on the other side. It looks like we might get some, maybe hit 70 this weekend, I don't know, that'd be nice. So there's, the, the staff is tired and exhausted, but now we are moving into budget. So I have been working through budget, CIP, the equipment replacement processes. I am also been working on trying to, let's say, for to council member, or a former council member, ours comments from a planning standpoint. We have active transportation plan and so that is coming. We will have some engagement processes coming up this spring that will, you know, that, that plan focuses on how, you know, how we get from point A to point B, non, non-motorized vehicles, so walking, biking, hiking, all of that type of stuff. And looking at an assessment of that community wide and then getting comments from that. And they will be actively involved here for railroad days and then a couple of other events throughout the summer. And then we'll bring that plan back and have public hearing here at city council. So we're, we've been working on the active transportation plan and leading up to some of those events. The downtown revitalization plan. And so that, we received a grant, $250,000. We have the RFP out currently. I have five, five agencies that are interested in, in doing business with us. We receive those proposals next Friday. And so we will be moving forward on that. And that downtown revitalization is focused essentially on the historic district and how we want as a community to, to look at moving forward altogether. And, and so there'll be, there'll probably be, there's going to be another committee formed as a part of that for the, to assist in the engagement process and working through that. I met, sure.
Yeah, I could. I, I know that the, the citizens that have gotten together were particularly interested in finding a way to get involved. So I just want to take this opportunity to, to reflect on what you just said, that there will be a committee that will be involved in this and so they will be able to participate and will be part of that vision, is that right?
Correct.
Thank you.
And so this week I also met with the Chamber of Commerce. So as, as everybody knows, that Union Pacific project is starting to get up and going. We're expecting a substantial amount of workers. So that project has now expanded to look at approximately 1,700 feet of shoreline from 1,250 that will be restored over along the Sacramento, which is, that's great. Expensive for them, but great for us. And then as a part of that comes with a lot of workers. So they're expecting to have about 9,000 truckloads move through, through the central exit to, to the yards. And then also an equal or more number of trucks going from the north yard to the south yard on Sacramento and Shear. And so that, I met with, I met with the restaurants. Cause there's been, you know, what I want to ensure, so we kind of started a little restaurant roundtable, but it's going to turn into a business roundtable. I met with them this week to discuss looking at ensuring that we have options for, for food every day of the week with all of our restaurants, also potentially expanding to breakfast and kind of having that discussion on how do we, how do we make sure that we are able to capitalize on the number of workers here? On top of that, I've been notified by Caltrans. So apparently I was mistaken and I'll follow up with the chamber, but there's two different projects. So one will be the bridge project that is getting ready to go out to bid. And then the other one is the reconstruction of the southbound lanes for approximately 13 miles on I-5. And so that is assisting, that's helping to hold up our TOTs. So a lot of those workers are, they're all staying here somewhere, right? They're, they're here, some of them five, seven days a week. And they're here staying in our hotels, our Airbnbs and that kind of stuff. And so that conversation started and had that this, this week. And then we decided, well, why don't we, let's look at a business roundtable. So now I will be working with the chamber to lead the business roundtable on a monthly basis. We're going to meet in the morning once a month and just kind of talk through the issues and, and those kinds of things. And so then, let's see what else I got. As for upcoming items, so earlier Rico mentioned the zoning code update. And so that will be, that will be at Planning Commission next week. And there's, I mean, it's kind of extensive, but not, not super extensive. And so I've, I've reviewed that and provided some comment, made some adjustments to be a little more economic development friendly. And so I would, you know, I can send that out. I won't get that out to you until probably Tuesday, because I'm off the rest of the week. But I can send that out to you guys, kind of a draft after the fact, it'll come to council. I think we're looking at second meeting in May, maybe, or, or potentially June. I, I don't remember. There's some public hearing requirements based on dates. And I, I can't remember exactly the planning of that, but that's coming forward. And then short-term rentals, Rico and I are, have discussed it. We're, that's, as you guys adopted that last year, we're looking to bring that back for review. And then that will be coming up shortly as well.
Are we going to go through an extensive process of that or just bring it to a meeting for updates?
Well, it's going to go to Planning Commission first. So to, to look at, you know, the, the component of, do we want to restrict or not restrict within R1 zoning on the, the amount of, you know, the amount of Airbnbs that we allow? I think the initial report a year ago, there was 26 in the R1 zoning. And we currently have somewhere around 70 registered, so I don't know what the current number is.
I think we started at like 59.
What, no, there was 26 in R1, there was 59 total.
Okay, yeah. And so generally we were just like, hey, well now we've had a year, we actually have data, let's just review what looks like now.
Yeah.
The big day was on the committee, you remember?
I don't remember, but I know it's around 70 something now.
Yeah, yeah, it's around 70 something now. But, you know, some of that analysis, we got to go back and look at what zoning district are they in? Are we really seeing the impact in the, you know, in the, in the R1, you know? And, and the, you know, as we mentioned, there's 300 vacant houses. And so I also, one of the things internally we discussed and didn't get to, because we weren't quite prepared for it. It's really easy to find a vacant house after it snows. And so one of our plans next winter is to, is to have a group of people that are willing to, hey, we're going to break up the community, we're going to go out, we're going to identify all those addresses and then be able to compile a list and be like, okay, here's what we know, right? And then, you know, because some of those may be Airbnbs. But, you know, I, I know if you drive down to Shasta Retreat this time of year, it's, there's like a few houses down there and that's where there's somebody actively.
As soon as it snows, they go in Arizona.
Yeah, exactly. And that's.
We'll see when it sunshines again.
Right.
Or come up on the holiday weekend.
Yeah. So, so I think that's a big part of it is a lot of them are second homes and that's just how they are. And then also we will have the snow policy coming up, hopefully on the next meeting. Or not the next meeting, the one in May, first one in May. For some reason I was thinking it was the middle of April already. That's all I got.
Nothing about the library roof.
Excuse me.
Well, the library roof is pending contractors.
Well, I'd like to follow up on that, just because I'm confused. We had gone through the process of identifying somebody that as I, as I recall.
Correct.
We had to pull back on that because they didn't have the warranty we wanted, is that right?
No. So, so the people that, I mean, we had, we had bids. And then they, they basically pulled their bids.
Okay.
And so we had to go back. So I, we went back out to try and get bids and we've been struggling to get anybody even show up all winter. I mean, we were aware of it, that's why there's a tarp over the end. This, the issue that we had this weekend was related to ice dam. And so that water had backed up and into an area where it normally wouldn't. And it was seeping underneath and getting, getting, got inside. We had the same issue in here. I had water raining from the ceiling the other day during the finance committee and I have it next door. I mean, it, it was, we had a lot of ice dam issues just because of the melt and the amount of snow. And even though we had the roof scooped off, it still didn't matter because the last snow, we didn't get it scooped.
Well, Benson's never been interested?
They did, yeah, they did originally bid on that, but we have, it was a substantially higher bid than we could, than, than what was justified for the actual repair.
It was like $7,000 too high.
Well, this item just won't, won't come to resolution. Cause I, I had thought, I was under the impression we were going with one a while ago, two. But if I remember right, we were prepared to spend up to 50,000, I think.
Yeah.
And they're higher than that now.
Well, that, that, that quote particularly came in at 80. Yeah, the one you're referring to. So yeah, that was way higher. So then, and then we had people pull, pull out. And so then essentially we had to start over the process.
I just wanted to make sure we had an opportunity to let these folks know that it's not that we're sitting on our budgets. The idea that there have been these stumbling blocks of finding somebody that could come in within our budget.
Yeah. And one, yeah, I mean, it was, we've, they actually, we'll just, we want to make sure that we're doing the right repair, I guess is the way I'm going to put it. Because what was proposed previously may or may not have actually fixed the problem. They just quoted, quote, and it wasn't, so now we, we have a lot more detail on what the actual issue is. And so we, we do have a contractor that's interested, but that was in February. And since then, we've obviously been moving snow and so.
Thank you. So my question on this note, has anyone qualified, been up on the roof of the library recently or since this incident to gauge the likelihood of any short-term failure over the next month or so? Given some of the weather conditions.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I mean, Brian actually had reached out before that even happened. But I mean, we still have snow on the roof, so we, you know, we were trying to time it so we could get him up here without. And then that issue happened. So there is a contractor he was in contact with back in February that was planning to come up. And obviously it doesn't do any good to look at a roof when it's covered in snow. And so that kind of got delayed. And now here we are in April with a, with an issue that was, you know, compounded on top of something that, I mean, we already knew was an issue. And so they're supposed to get contacted them. And then he reached back out to them, I don't know, earlier this week, but I, I don't know where that stands specifically on, on. But there, my expectation is they'll be up in another week or two.
Given that we're not going to be meeting again for another two weeks and we'd like to have, you know, more resolution, at least in the short term, for the library. We can't just go two weeks without, without progress. Would it be possible in the meantime, I don't know if you need authorization from us, probably not. Would it be possible in the meantime, I don't know if you need authorization from us or probably not, to maybe get a contractor to see whatever could be done to stabilize leak issues, you know?
Yeah. Well, I think Brian, Brian was able to stabilize it because it was all related to the ice dam. And so he was able to get that scooped off and cleaned out. And so now the water drains effectively and won't cause that issue again. Plus we're in warmer weather and so, but as far as the ceiling tiles, there, I don't believe Brian knew they were in the basement. He did order some. They won't be here till Thursday though.
Okay. And then you think we might, I mean, I guess it's all just up to timing, but we could expect a quote back within the next two to four weeks?
I hope so, but there's no guarantees.
If anyone knows of any quality roofers in the area.
Yeah.
That's not Benson who we're well aware of, please don't hesitate to reach out to City Hall.
Yeah. And we, we actually had to go to Reading to get anybody to even respond.
I have.
Unfortunately.
A new roofer I found out about in the last month I could reach out to.
Good.
Also from Reading.
Okay, Tim.
My last thing here too is also just make sure watching the weather and adjusting our plan for the library roof based on upcoming weather.
It is terrible. I didn't know that the other contractor pulled his bid and bounced out. So that kind of leaves us with our hands tied, but you see that we are working on, we'll get some money. It's a priority to all of us, you know?
Yeah, yes.
I think the other priority of it is just making sure we fix it.
And you're right. We were lucky that there were no children there when that shit happened. So they're lucky stars.
I have a cord on the off now. As a matter of fact, I've had to turn away four to six kids who I wanted to come into the children's area. But with no ceiling tiles up there, some of the insulation looks like it's going to fall down at any minute. I'm waiting the plastic up and I'm leaving the cord on and off and children racing for the rain currents.
Better safe than sorry.
Exactly.
And thank you for your due diligence, all of you.
Now, immediately with my consumer, see it sooner than later.
We're working on it, ma'am.
Appreciate it.
All right, we'll move on to council comments and I'm just going to go this way around the roof. So if you'd like to turn us up.
I, the only thing that I really know is, it was kind of cool to see them convicts shoveling off the roofs. You know, they're paying back society and they're probably making a couple bucks. But to see them out there just, it was kind of cool. We got a, this week Saturday is the Easter egg hunt, I believe. I think it starts at 10 o'clock. They got all ages. So it's at the community building. It's going to be inside. So if it's raining, you're good. Lot of people helping, Rotary's supporting. So I encourage everybody to come out, bring the kids and do the Easter egg hunting. And then on the 29th is the Rotary Golf Tournament. If you guys are golfers and want to put your crews together, come out. All the money that is raised from the golf tournament supports the elementary school backpack program. We send our kids home on Fridays with a backpack full of food. And unfortunately, we need to do this so that they don't come to school Monday starting at that. It's kind of like a self-sufficient backpack. So we know that the kids are well learners and they come to school ready to learn again on Monday. So I'm behind it a thousand percent. So we also have T signs available for $50. You can advertise your business, but you need to get it to me kind of in the next couple of days. Contact any Rotary member and they can steer you in the right direction. We're also looking for donations for raffle prizes so that people can bid on them. And that money, again, it all goes to the backpack program. And I can't emphasize, these are our kids and it's a great program. So please help support it. And other than that, we'll let it go. Okay, I'm good. Thanks.
Bruce, Mr. Vice Mayor, thank you. A few things. First of all, at the local transportation commission meeting this last month, they had a briefing on the Caltrans projects that are going on. And as you mentioned, Mr. City Manager, we've got the Interstate 5 coming up. And the original plan was, was for them to come to each of the affected cities, basically Mount Chastain us, and have a presentation at the council meeting. And what I recommended to them was that in the past, it's been more effective for us to have a presentation at the community center aimed at the public themselves. So they get a chance to sit down and be able to learn and all of that. So that's what they're going to do for us. And then of course, we all can attend that meeting and be part of it. So that's coming up. Another thing, I've got two different events for the COS Foundation that I'm a board member of. We've got an electric bike that has raffle tickets. These all support scholarships for our students. And the electric bike tickets are $25. Then on April 29th, that Saturday, we also have a scholarship dinner night and those tickets are $30. So if you know somebody that might be interested or need those, please let me know. Next, I want to bring some really exciting news and that is from the D-PAC and the Fire Council. And that is that Siskiyou County was just awarded a $10 million fuel mitigation plan that will allow them to do what they were doing for us here in Dunsmere countywide. And so they're identifying 500 homes that they'll be able to harden and put up defensible spaces around the county. And they also will be able to do 300 public, public spaces, I think, like city-owned spaces. So if we have something, maybe we could do that. On top of that, the next meeting of the League of California Cities Sacramento Valley Division, the membership meeting, which meets every quarter, their next one is going to be in Reading. And that'll be on May 19th. And what's interesting about that is, is that I was able to get them to have a D-PAC and CalFire and Core do a presentation to this membership meeting on what we've done here and, and recommendations for other cities that have forest concerns to be able to take advantage of it. And on top of that, the one thing I asked for at the last meeting was if there was anybody out there that had a neighborhood chipping program that could be a model for what we could do in order to have it so that you go into a neighborhood, you let everybody know you've got your, your branches and everything, move them down, leave them in a particular place, and then a chipper, chipper goes around and chips them. I was told that Nevada City has one of those programs and I've got the information on that. You know, it's a leap at this point to know how we'd be able to come up with a financing and how it would work. But the idea is that I want to try and move ahead and figure out there is a way that not only we could use, but other folks could use. And we've got a volunteer fair coming up the day after the scholarship dinner on the 30th of April. And I'm really excited about that because we've got a lot of energy going into it. The chamber is endorsing it, supporting it. Cheryl Petty has done a really fantastic job moving things along. Cynthia Henderson has done a great job getting advertising out. And that kind of brings me to the whole subject, my, my final subject for today, for tonight, and that is about visioning. We did a visioning exercise here in this room, probably about six years ago, maybe five. And it was the, it was the most in-depth visioning exercise that has taken place in those years since. And we had about 30 people here. And we were able to actually come up with a vision statement. We worked it out. We had some editor types in there that were able to kind of piece it together and we got a vision statement. But what everybody here is saying when they're talking about visioning and planning is more than getting 30 people together or sending out a survey and getting a dozen or so responses. There is a model for how to do a visioning process. And it's a model that was supported by the Ford Family Institute, which has been supporting Siskiyou County with money ever since the logging company up in Oregon, all the small towns that they had served, started losing the logging things and going down. And so they've been supporting cities like Dunsmere by providing various activities to help us promote our economy. The one thing that they did recently that was amazing to me and I witnessed it was to create a building Etna's future. It was done in Etna and it was a Saturday morning, actually Saturday all day. They had a lunch in the middle of it and they were able to get 80% of the citizens of Etna to that event. And they were able to have an event that was just amazing to see the energy and everything. And the whole point is, is that they actually had a committee that started planning that in September and then had the actual event in April. So the whole point is, is that when I'm talking about having a volunteer fair, I reached out to Crystal Aston, who's our representative for the Ford Family Institute, and requested $1,000 for support for the volunteer fair. And I said at that time, that at the same time, this volunteer fair, I see it as a first step this year towards building, towards having an actual visioning exercise, building Dunsmere's future the following year. If we were to say right now, we're going to have something in June or July or whatever, and we go through the normal process without a newspaper, with basically no way to communicate. So what I'm envisioning is one of the things we'd have at the volunteer fair is a committee that begins at that point to start planning for a visioning exercise the following year in April. And with that in mind, that way that can lead ahead. And we can actually have an event down the line where we spend a whole lot of energy making sure everybody gets there. That was what they did as a success. They put a whole lot of energy into making sure everybody got there, 80% of the city. You know, 30 people in here versus 80% of Etna. So that's what I'm kind of building towards. The volunteer fair is step one towards the ultimate goal of building Dunsmere's future event. And thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Claro. I'd like to thank all the public comments tonight. It's really refreshing to see people here engaging with Dunsmere and providing perspective. I wanted to follow up with Councilman Deutsch and kind of add to the way the chamber roundtable works. I know that they bring in guests for the chamber mixers for hand here. I don't know if you have a contact or perhaps Dustin has a contact with Caltrans. I know last time we had major projects, the business community in Dunsmere was very hard hit by the various schedule changes, but also Caltrans would say something and then change their schedule yet again, or their contractor would. But letting them know upfront what the summer schedule or maybe two-year schedule looks like for some of these projects, I think would be helpful. So.
Well, I think Michael's the, the always on with the chamber now, so we can work that.
Yeah. And I, and I've been working with Cheryl. I mean, that was part of the discussion that we had was specifically that on how is that, you know, how is that? Cause like when they did the bridge, central exit's closed, it's closed the entirety. And so all of that traffic will be rerouted into the northbound lane. So.
What we don't want to have is a off-ramp closed during, remember, for briefness.
Yeah. And, but I don't, yeah, I can't control that part, but it's one of those that we need to, it's for us, it's a, we need them to, to communicate, help, help us communicate that. And so that's, that's the challenge. And I, but yes, I'm, I, I need to, I have reached, or I, I reached out to our contact related to the bridge and I haven't heard, that was like two days ago. So I, there's that, but that is a definite concern for the business community and it is something that I'm working on.
This, this is the third year we were told the bridge was going to be done.
Yeah. It's actually, it's actually going to bid. So yes.
Because the other thing that happened too is last time when they closed all but one lane during busy weekends, sometimes you'd have a two-hour wait on the freeway and it really impacted people getting to and from work. And people, and it really hurt the businesses because people didn't want to come up from Reading. People didn't want to come down from Mount Chastain. The thing might just put the businesses at ease too, if they knew what the timeline for some of these projects were as well.
Yeah. And now that's kind of my intention is I want to be able to, I want the, I want Caltrans to show up. That's what I, I said, I'm, I'll get a district two rep here to discuss the actual timeline, what the projection is and all of that. So, and then I'll also bring, have them come to council as well.
Cool. That's all I have for two.
Okay. Yeah, roofess committee meeting last night. We're moving ahead on that. And on that, I just want to really put out there, if anyone knows, anyone would be interested in volunteering for that, please send them to Bruce's volunteer fair on the 30th. And that way they can also find about other local events and so the others. And I'd also just like to once, as Matthew said, thank everyone who came into public comment today. And also just thank the city staff, and I'm sure they can all agree with me on this. After the year we've had, I hope we stick with rain and sun and we're done with snow for the year. It's not often, it's not often, I spent, working at the ski park, it's not often I say, I don't want snow. But right now, this winter has done that. So.
Council should give, those city employees, just give them a big hand, $1,018. Big hand, you guys.
Might we take a group recess?
Yeah, we'll do a five or 10-minute recess is more appropriate.
We've only got about 10 minutes left.
Do a five-minute recess. We're during at 7:31. All right, it is now 7:31 and I will bring the meeting back into order.
Session.
Session. There we go. Thank you.
There we go.
Were there any more committee reports, Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yeah. So we'll move into committee reports. We did have a finance committee meeting. I'll let Matthew.
Yeah. I guess it was a, our first budget workshop meeting, but it's very preliminary. The, the big numbers that you're kind of focusing on at first are generally looking that are revenue-wise in the general fund. It looks as if we're continuing on increase, but at a less, you know, less high rate of increase. It's going to be difficult when we look at our Airbnb things because the amount of revenue we're receiving from our TOT is not paid for anyone that lives here, it's paid by the people that stay, is fantastic. It's essentially double on average what it was when I started out. So it's going to be an important dynamic, you know, going forward on, on that. But expenses, we didn't really get very granular on it. Everything's costing more. I'd, I'd say it was very much a preliminary information on the budget. I would encourage all members of the public to come to the finance committee meeting, particularly the next three months of them as we're working on the budget. Because if you want a sense of where it all goes and, you know, where our priorities have to be and we choose to be right now, it's definitely reflected, you know, in that.
Matthew?
Yeah?
Question?
Yeah.
Has the TOT felt any pain from the closing of Cave Springs this year?
Not yet. We did discuss it.
Okay.
Yeah, we.
I'm curious to see.
We haven't got the, so the deposit, so that transition happened late November or mid-November. And so that's typically the slower time anyway, but we'll see that impact because we haven't got the payment for the first quarter.
Yeah.
And so that's when we'll start, we'll start seeing the impact now.
I think we're going to fill a little something on that.
I would think we would. Yeah, we, we discussed the timeframe behind that.
But in the Airbnb.
Well, so prior to the increases we've seen, Cave Springs used to be almost, almost, not quite, but almost half of our TOT revenue was that big. Blake said he, he didn't know off the top of the head, or his head, but he thought it was closer to less than 20%, somewhere in that range. So it'll, it'll still be, it'll hurt. Thankfully, if the remodeling that I understand is currently happening to the hotel, if that can spread out to the cabins and get going again, you know, by next tourist season, say in the summer, we should potentially be realizing much higher TOT from that particular property. It'll, you know, stabilize in the long run and be productive, but that's a good, good point. We did talk about that.
I'm not sure.
Sewage fund is, you know, the one that really stands out as the most in trouble relative to costs and reserves. And we discussed that tonight.
Well, and, and solid waste.
Oh, well, sorry. Yeah. We, solid waste, I don't know the scale of what the increases are. But if you remember the full history of solid waste, we had a lot of money in because we included services that are difficult to do now, like sweeping and tree removal. That got taken away from us. We had all this money. We have been slowly using it up and not increasing our rates. We have the new RFP that does, or you know, new contract that costs more. But I, I know that Councilman Lukeyezy and Council, former Councilman Arth were on the committee originally. Dustin, do we have any updates on when that expense is even going to be known?
Yeah. So, so that's, I'm trying to coordinate with, with the mayor on setting that committee. Yeah, so, so that's, I'm trying to coordinate with, with the mayor on setting that committee date. We just haven't been able, the last month, we've kind of been in emergency mode from a staff standpoint. So we expect to have that really, really soon, probably in the next, hopefully in the next two weeks. And then we'll be able to report more on that. But I mean, the, the challenge we have is there wasn't, wasn't a projection, well, I won't say there wasn't a projection from our part. We did not receive a projection from the increase of the landfill tipping fees. And so I know personally, my, my trash just went up from thirty-three to thirty-five bucks, and I didn't even get a notice out there. They're like, oh, we, tipping fees must be going up again, so. My, I think I'm going to have to call White City, ask them what their projections are, what they look, because the expenses have gone up everywhere, and now OPEC has cut oil again, so fuel costs have gone up. So I would expect there's going to be another increase, I just don't know what that is. And, but we need to make sure that I understand what they're going to do for tipping fees in White City. And so that carries into the transfer station thus to us, and, and, and so that's, that's primarily a, a big chunk of, of that expense.
Those bastards.
And, and then we also have, we also have to implement the, the green waste component, which we're running out of time to do, and so this, you know, we're going to be discussing the two-eighteen and making sure we have the money to implement that, and so we're trying to look at some options there.
And on top of it, you're now allowed to do street sweeping in.
Correct.
In this fund again. The state has, we've heard changed that rule.
With, without a two-eighteen?
With, yeah, so we can include it in the solid, or the, sorry, the.
The fees.
Yeah, i- in that fund, in that interest.
Yeah, that's right, it was originally that, when they took it away, and now they're giving it back.
No, it wasn't that, we did it, we got, you know, up to spring court. We didn't have to retroactively deal with it, but we couldn't continue with the process. Now you're able to, so that'll come back. And I didn't, we didn't discuss it at Finance Committee, for once I refrain, but that law enforcement increase that was due to arrive last year is going to come home to roost here shortly. So that one, you know, we could be talking about several hundred thousand dollar increase in our annual operating budget, so just be aware there. Things look good, all our revenues are up, but all of our expenses are up too, so we'll see where, where it lands. But, but the economic activity has just been increasing in Dunsmere. You know, it was a general thing, we're.
Can we do a GoFundMe for our?
Yeah.
I think it's called a tax measure.
I, I, I do plan on maybe updating the council on a renewed effort to do a sales tax to help cover law enforcement with fire. I know it was an uphill battle last time, and we, we didn't succeed. But we have, what, eighteen months for the next general, a little bit more. I think it'd be good to engage the community, and you know, if they don't want it, that's, that's fine, but, you know, I want to give them the option as much as we possibly can. You want services, you want a nicer town, we need to come up with ways to pay for it.
Yeah.
And that's what it is. And if you didn't want to vote for the tax, and I'm not particularly pro-tax, but if you didn't want to vote for it, don't stand and complain to me about sidewalks on the six.
I, I agree with you totally, but on the other hand, I, what I think we've all learned in the previous ones was that what people come into is the idea that you're a screwed-up government that isn't doing your job right, and et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah.
So the key then is, is to make it very clear as you're going forward that what you're doing is very solid, and et cetera. And that's the best way to overcome it.
Where they can trust us, just.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, I, I know the finance committee's had good times and bad as far as, you know, meetings before council, but I, I think just having that has been a useful avenue. I remember with the people that most distressed the city in the first year or two, you know, they started coming to every meeting and pouring through it, taking these secret notes, you know, never saying anything, and then slowly they just stopped coming because it was boring, and they found out we were goofing around, just talking about all the, all the aspects of it. And there's so much of what we decide to do is things we can't, there's so many non-negotiable things when it comes to what we expect from our city. And we have so many, so much money, but I, I don't think we're going to be in any dire crisis right this second. But those reserves we've been building up the last two years, you know, it's only four hundred thousand, and that's, you know, less than half of what we've spent in a year in the general fund alone, so it's, it'll allow us to do all these things and not go into crisis mode, but I still watch very carefully what our finances look like at that two-years-out standpoint, which coincidentally, you know, with the tax, we're just really in an all-or-nothing game, because the current one we have expires.
Oh, that's right.
It's only a half point, right? But that expires two thousand twenty-six. So at that point, you know, boom, we've lost pretty much like a hundred fifty thousand projected, projected by then, it's about a hundred and twenty now. So, you know, that's going to be something to watch, and I, I'm potentially in favor of trying to get a citizens group together outside of council to work on the tax measure.
That's a good idea.
See if we can do it the other way, start, start to grow it organically. Anything more from Finance Committee?
I think we covered it.
I, I will say, I, I've worked with Blake now for a number of years. If he gets into a certain mode when he's working on the budget, and he's fully in budget preparation.
Yeah, he, he came to me today, he's like, oh, he, he handed me a sheet this morning, and then he comes this afternoon, he's like, oh, that's out of date, let me go get you a new one. He's fully in budget right now, which is good, so.
Any other committee meetings in the last two weeks? No? Um, we will move on to item number seven, approval of the minutes of March.
Motion to approve the minutes from March sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Second?
You got it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, done, motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to the consent agenda, which is the check register for three-eleven through three-thirty-one.
I'll make a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And there is no public hearing today, so we'll move on to old business, which only has one item, and that is the public's work building discussion and update.
All right, so I, I would love to say more has been happening in the last two weeks, but it's been, there's just a lot going on, so it's, we're moving forward. I've met with pace engineering on the site layout, and kind of an update after the council discussion last time. I have not seen anything back on that. We are actively moving, and so.
Are they helping us move? No?
No.
Yeah, that so sucks.
So they have asked the, a date for a power shut-off, I have not given them a date, because I don't have internet access yet at our temporary office, so. Until I know that we are set up completely, that, I'm not going to give them a date on that. So we're waiting on Vive to do that, but I did sign the Vive agreement, and now we're starting the downtown Wi-Fi process, so I've engaged on that, we've engaged on that site. I just, we're just trying to figure out the logistics of it.
And mine, Dustin, I know this is non-secretary here, but any update on the timeline for the Vive project since you brought it up?
Uh, not, not totally. I mean, I, I mean, she just emailed late, late today, and I didn't get to it because I was preparing for council, but I, I mean, they're still projected ninety days when I signed it, so, I mean, that was the twenty-ninth or something like that, so a week ago.
They said the, the, the engineering for, because they get all the asphalt, that takes about sixty days.
I remember all that, I was just wondering, I know I'm going to be asked at the next summer conference.
No, you're just impatient, so, gun, then you want to have your, he wants, I want it now!
And so in that process, I, I did, I was able to get the community center included as a part of the Wi-Fi. Wi-ties, so I ended up with six locations for ours with, that are included as a part of that, including the wastewater plant, community center, city, city hall, sheriff's department, library.
That, that helped a lot of different things all the way throughout the year, just having it there.
Yeah, and the resource center.
Coverage when it comes time for Brewfest.
Brewfest, so I, what I would tell them, Michael, is we can hope for railroad days, but we'll be pretty sure for Brewfest.
And so that discussion has happened with railroad days. I mean, we're kind of off-topic here a little bit, but railroad days, so Vive is in contact with the chamber, and they're working to bring in a temporary.
A temporary.
Because they know that they won't have the others installed by that time. So we will have temporary, temporary facilities.
So we'll have a juice.
That's great.
And then, so, and then the other component of the public works building is obviously the, the money side of it and the financing. I have not dug into that since the last meeting, but that is on my register for next week to dig into that, looking at, you know, it was a topic we brought up at Finance Committee, and I'm going to reach out to the local banks and see where we'd be at on terms and those kind of things, on what that looks like for money. And, you know, I think at some point, we're just going to have to bite the bullet, borrow the money so we can get moving. You know, I, I hope to have a roof over their head by November first, and so that's, that's six months from last Sunday.
Roots are in short supply in Dunsmere.
Yeah, there are a few that are a little rough, aren't there? All right, any other questions on the public works building?
Well, just with the design process, is that further along at all, or?
Um, so I'm, I'm going to try and meet next week with, just kind of, just to kind of get overarching, like where we could be on potential costs. So we're trying to con, trying to do a lot of this in-house. And so part of that, like the water component, if we would go out, we'd have to pay prevailing wage, it would cost us approximately two hundred seventy-five thousand. And so we're trying to do all of that stuff in-house for about thirty thousand. And so we're, we're, we're working on that, it's, it's an ongoing thing.
I guess what, part of what I'm thinking is, I know, because it wasn't agenda, Councilwoman Lukeyzi didn't feel free to share her thoughts on the form and design, but I'd hate to get too far into what the numbers are and then open up that, that box again.
Right, no, yeah, because it, so the, the design compo, like the facade and design component, I've, you know, a lot of, when you build by a steel structure, then you can say, hey, I want, I want this as my front facade and how it looks.
Even embedded steel, I think, is something that hasn't been quite determined yet. Or maybe it has, but I just, I'd hate to feel like you guys were undercut going down that route when there was a time to review it. We have to do something, so it's not, it's reasonable.
Right.
But if, say, council is attached to it, looking a certain way, feeling a certain way, that may all go out the window, and we find out it costs an extra six hundred thousand, but it may not if it costs an extra hundred thousand, you know, so stuff like that.
So, so, and, well, and I guess maybe that's a clarification I need, is, is there, is it primarily the front facade that would be forward-facing to the street?
Yeah.
Or, and are you okay with steel on the other three sides? Because if it's just the front facade facing the street and ensuring we have an aesthetically pleasing look, and then, like, so our, my intention and what I'm, what I'm going to bring forward to you guys is, the fence on the front side is going to look exactly like the fence, or it'll be black wrought iron, just like the fence that's around the railroad, the train. And so, and then that would have like a green fabric, so it's not see, so you can't see through it, right? So that may be something we have to look at, but.
I'm just throwing this out there, it, it would be kind of nice if the side facing the pool could be mural.
I, I, I agree, and that's, that was our thought from a staff standpoint, like, that side of it, you know, even though it's steel, you can, they can do, you know, beautiful mural or painting, we could, we could do that on there, and then that would obviously change what, what, change the aesthetics of that.
Yeah, and then, I mean, the biggest one, of course, is even just footprint. I know you're working on that from a technical standpoint, but, and I assume we, with the weather, haven't had a chance to do any inspections on the front building, but like whether we're building a campus or just kind of a garage back there, I think is, and we're leaning towards, you know, trying to make it a campus that encompasses all the needs we have there.
It also might be nice to have, make sure that, because the park and the botanical garden is a very beautiful area, and someone coming out or going into the park does not have a, I know we were talking about cinder storage and all that kind of stuff, but not to have overly industrial or.
Yeah, right.
You know, or something in the way is more of a, you know, like along that, that face of the community building, you could put a few trees in or something like that to help with the.
Yeah, and that's part of the thought process, you know, but from a, from an aesthetic standpoint, you know, like keeping the fence is important, but one of the things like, as I was sitting in the Park and Rex building today, was like, if we do decide to, you know, I, you know, I'm leaning towards new just because of the age of that building? Well, I found out today that that building actually started its life over in McLeod and was moved here a hundred years ago. Yeah, so apparently, so it was moved in the twenty, twenties, nineteen twenty, nineteen thirty. And so it was moved from over there to over here, and so it's been repurposed once already, but one of the things I thought of is I looked at the ceiling and the beautiful woodwork on the ceiling, maybe that is, maybe we take some of that stuff and recover it, and then make that as part of our interior, like in the office space and the, and the little lobby area, maybe we make that as part of the, you know, like, hey, when you come in, you still get an aspect of what it, what it truly was.
Then what I would potentially recommend as far as direction goes, that just so you don't feel undercut, if you get further along with quotes, and then, oh, we got to change it based on the opinions, maybe we do just a design workshop, so you get council's general thoughts and preferences.
Yeah, I can.
That'd be next meeting, but maybe sometime in the next two or three.
Well, yeah, I don't want to get too far out, because I'm concerned that, my, my goal would be to have it on probably the next meeting, just so I have a good understanding of, okay, this is, these are the, this is, this is what the expectation is.
I hate to say this, but to do this right, it may not be practical to get it done well by November first. I, I know you're working your hardest to do that, which would be amazing, but is there any possibility? Yeah, what, what's the contingency plan to give ourselves maybe more time to get the design right and make sure we build what we need fully?
I don't fully know that answer. I mean, if we, if we get to that point, I mean, it's, yeah, I mean, we don't have any space at the airport currently. It's all taken. And so that's, that's, that's part of the challenge. The other challenge, if we did have to work from that place, and I have to figure some temporary, maybe it's carports or something like that in order.
Be to build a quick metal building, like in their neighborhood at the airport.
Just as hard as doing this one.
Really?
Yeah.
And it's later, just metal?
Yeah, I mean, it would, I mean, it would, we could potentially do it, and I mean, eventually get our money back out of it, but it would, I mean, we still have to do a sequel and all that.
Caltrans has like these mortgage-related grants, loans available to build hangars, but I guess that'd be, if all you're to figure out.
Yeah, but then I bet it'd mess up the grant if we built the hangar, and well, for a year, we're going to stash no removal.
Our equipment's used to maintain the airport, so we'd have a justification for it, but we'd have to be very certain of that.
Yeah, so there's certain things that I'm allowed to store there and not allowed to store there.
Or is that a detail?
Yes, yeah, it has to be in support of aeronautical operations. So street sweeper, snowplow, those are all in support of aeronautical operations. You know, like we have our air compressor that does crack sealing, we do that stuff.
We run a backup or mini excavator.
Those, not so much. That, that's the challenge, that's the other aspect of what can't, you know, fit into that component.
So even if we had a vacant hangar, it would really be.
We could, we could partially use it, just not fully, like, yeah, not in the capacity that we need. We can't use it as an operational shop going in and out on a daily basis.
Been vacated yet? Future agenda item.
All right. Are we all, you, you done with?
Yeah, unless anybody has any other questions.
All right, future, future agenda item.
I would like to know, okay, there's, I'm doing this for titty toes, okay? There's been talk, okay? People are getting together. I guess the law, the law. It is against the law to tow a vehicle more than ten miles. You can't, you can't incur more hardship on the citizens of that already depressed community. So with that in mind, I heard that they might be leasing Dwight's yard to comply, to keep it legal.
I don't know if that's the component, it's either lease or purchase, but I, I am fully aware that they did take that on, one hundred percent.
Okay, so if that's the case, what about people that have?
Talking about.
Anyway, would you like to discuss this when we do the snow policy, perhaps?
Yeah, we, 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 because there's been some injustices done. It's a long way, thirty-one miles, and, and, I don't know. Anyway, another thing I'd like to know is, what, what's the status on a bank? Have we ever got a bank?
Finance Committee talked about that extensively.
You mean like a bank as in one in the, in here, or a bank for the city?
Like Bank America, geez.
I've personally been working hard on that one. I've personally been working hard on that one, and it's a dead end, I'm a, I'd be shocked if we see another in-person bank in Dunceber in our election.
Really?
Yeah. No, I think you could get some type of business component where maybe someone develops a, like, shared workspace that has a nice ATM, or maybe even has a representative that can do some financial transactions as technology improves, but.
Like a kiosk, a bank kiosk type thing?
It was cheaper for US Bank to stay probably by about three or four fold than it would be for anyone to move in. And they couldn't figure out how to afford to stay, and their business model accounts for a spread, so they were the most likely bank to be here. A credit union, I mean, the, the best we could hope for currently is a really good ATM, but I mean, we're a little off topic, but yeah, that's my update, I tried.
And my, what I'd like to put out on this one.
If I remember.
What? What I'd like to put out on that with the bank is right now, the current market, or the current environment the banks exist in is very tentative, and if there's some kind of, there has to be a big shift from where it is now to them being a lot more secure in their own finances before we start seeing, before we start being.
Just yours.
Yeah, it would be, I don't want to grab a Cleveland Dubby anymore.
Right, well, I think we have a lot, I know last time a gentleman talked about revisiting the cannabis ordinance, I, I was not in favor of doing that till we have capacity, but I just don't want it to be lost.
It was a good idea, he was supposed to be here today, I don't know why he's not, I'm like, you're.
Yeah, 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 but it's a good idea.
I, I kind of think it's a good idea.
But I, I mean, obviously, maybe what I'd like to see, I guess, is a prioritization. We don't have a lot of staff time, or even our own time to get all the projects done we want to, and some of them are necessary, like public works building, but maybe actually be brave enough to make the decision, hey, we're going to ignore this and this, this stretch.
I can, I can, I have a list here that I wrote down, kind of periodically throughout the meeting, so I, I will, they didn't get, so Wendy was, is, was on her way out to vacation and then she'll be gone for the, she'll be here for the meeting, but not here for the agenda the next meeting. And so I will try to do my best to get the future agenda items that I have on my list that are onto the agenda so people can see them. I just, there was just some miscommunication.
You know, that's more internal, what you, what you'd like to say, I'm more thinking in terms of, we've always had a problem, I agree on this, I think, that we want to prioritize everything because everything Dunceber is so important to us, but if everything's our priority, then nothing is because we're just equally split. And so things do matter more than others, and it's hard, but, you know, maybe if we, because if I were in a city manager's shoes, I'd feel a little overwhelmed because every time I hear something I want to work on, but we should keep them in line, so maybe be brave enough to say, you know, hey, we can't deal with sidewalks right now.
Excuse me.
Or this, other than bare minimum, because we're working on the downtown historic district of revitalization and.
Perfect example is, is the city-owned buildings.
Yeah.
What does he prioritize when he's got three that need it now?
Yeah, and we really need to do a comprehensive study before we spend money on roof one or the other, but we're constantly running from the things.
One thing I'd like to put out on the potentially postponing things is, for the cannabis one, I think that we, that's one that we should try to get to soon because it's a rare agenda item that can, that by expanding and doing a little review, we might be able to actually bring in more income, more revenue. And that might, it's not going to be much revenue, but it might help free up a few other things, so that's one thing I think we should kind of.
So this is a great conversation, because I, I'd like to look at it and see what would be involved, I suspect the opposite. It's relatively low priority compared to some of the stuff we have right now, and I'm fine if council decides otherwise, it'd be great to know.
I think, I think.
Yeah, well, I, I, I want to do it for sure, but part of it's a, what does our planning staff look like?
I've talked to the lady, you know, it's the florista, it's one of the best things that, that they did to increase, so I'm, I'm all for it.
Yeah, no, I agree. Well, I have, side note, two things I'd like to just have as a quick review. One in the next, next meeting, and one with no particular set date, the one for next meeting is just a quick follow-up on if anything's been found for the library.
A contract.
Quick item, yeah, just, just a quick check in.
Contractor update?
Exactly, and then the other one I'd like, and this one doesn't have to be next meeting, I know Blake is busy, I wouldn't mind just a quick rundown, just so that way we can take it to the constituents and the citizens of the town, and that is how inflation has affected, just maybe a quick little presentation, five minutes, about on how the inflation has affected the city and its finances and our spending, and how it may continue to affect.
Well, as chairman of the finance committee, you should present that to us.
I, well.
I agree.
Blake has no time, he's working on the budget.
So, so as part of the, I think, as part of the very first budget discussion, when I bring it to council, I will ensure that we discuss the inflation component.
Okay.
And I also have on my Caltrans construction and all of that stuff, the impacts of that, I will work to get a rep to attend a meeting.
Well, if you're done, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Third.
Third. All right, meeting is adjourned.